I call a meeting to order. Beginning with the flag salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I would like to welcome you to a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. I am the only commissioner in the room. This is a public meeting and all are present however, and we are making recordings of the meeting and it's also available online. Under awards and recognition, I have one letter to read. It's a million thanks to you and Yumitella County Parks, addressed to Chip Sessin, Park Manager, from Barbara J. Hetrick of Barbara and the Blues Crew. Dear Chip, I hope we left the area in good or better shape than we found it. I cannot express how much appreciation our class leaders and students have for getting to use the pavilion and grounds for Sawyer training. We hope to get trails opened up and up in the area and just as soon as we can get out on them. You are delightful to work with and as I expressed, the park is looking fabulous under your hand. Keep it up with warmth and appreciation. So that is Harris County Park. We have minutes of the previous meeting, April 7th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Christian approval.
Sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any additions to the agenda?
If I'm aware.
Okay. At this point, we will receive any input from the public relative to items that are not otherwise on the agenda. We have no input from the public? All right. We'll move on to item number one, Sheriff's Office Purchase Headsets.
Sergeant Roberts, this is Sergeant Roberts from the Sheriff's Office. I'm reporting this morning to request approval for three new wireless headset sets from Satcom. We have three control boats in our fleet and right now we don't have really any effective ways to protect the area and get good communication between dispatch and also on the craft. So these are our sets that are going to be in our need. They can be used between boats so they're not set to one boat at the other. So they're just going to be a really versatile tool for us and I think they're going to do what we need to do.
So I've got a quick question on that. I just want to make sure that if the disaster is going to actually be here, the person wearing that headset is going to be comfortable or is he going to be clear or was that going to be like, I'm not sure.
Maybe a little bit. That's probably not meant to be seen. I haven't seen this in person, but I do know I've talked to the reps that they have these systems in place all over the country, using them on control boats. So I anticipate that this is going to be the system.
Other questions of Sergeant Roberts? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the person's wireless headset for Umutilla County Sheriff's Office's marine ball program.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you Sergeant Roberts.
Thank you.
Our second item, health insurance renewal. Is Jennifer doing that?
Jennifer, and also Mr. Beamer is on the line.
Oh, okay.
This is Jennifer Blake, Umutilla County Community Resources Director. Doug Beamer with Wheatland is online with us as well. We received a renewal this year from Pacific Source for a 5.9% increase in both medical and dental. We were running in the 90s for our loss ratio this year, so we view this rate increase as extremely fair. Originally, they came out with about an 8% sharpener pencil and offered the 5.9, so we jumped on it. So we're here to ask the insurance agency to renew our current plans with Pacific Source on changes to our coverage.
Questions of either Mr. Beamer or Jennifer?
I have no questions. I agree with 5.9% is a very fair number, but I think I motion to approve.
I agree with it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item number, item number three, insurance agent of record. Are you doing that Jennifer or are you doing it?
Mr. One, I am. District General Director of Community Services. Before you, you have the approval for our RFP that went out for insurance agent of record and that is for our property liability insurance and also our working comp insurance. We have three bids, Graybill, Graybill Group, Scranton, I guess Scranton Agency and Wheatland Insurance. And we did a, we had a review board and we reviewed based on weakness of our experience and also the cost of the, of the agent of record, the charge for the services. On that, basically the cost with the end factor there and Graybill was the lower insurance on their costs. We've had experience, we've been dealing, working with them for I think 20 years and we've never really had any issues with them, or we have had any issues with them and their cost was less, the next one was weak when the insurance was close, the still was a little bit more on that. So we decided to go ahead and go with Graybill Insurance again.
Questions of Dan?
Dan, do you know if there's any carryover issues or liability from last year or the previous years? Well, you know, working comp, there's always different things there and that's kind of a little confidential. There are a few hot people that have areas where you say it's carryover, if that's the question.
No, beyond working comp, it's strictly facilities and liabilities.
And what I know at right now, I don't know anything, usually most of our clients in reality are with the local department, the chip center. That's our biggest one, the Rock, maybe the show and stuff. So those are our biggest clients that people are against us. The, we're having difficulty, I'm not sort of geographically aware if we have anything going on there, I'd have to check on that, if there's some sort of, you know, with inmates wrongful. I don't know the S R that one commissioner. Anyway, the other is mainly water damage, gross leaking, different things like that. Maybe it's settled pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you. I would move for approval to accept the Graybill group as our insurance agent of record.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Item number four, elections payable. Is that you also Dan?
Yes, Commissioner. Before you, it is the payable for the printing for the many special election coming up for all the special districts have their elections. And the printing cost is $18,567.92. That prints all our ballots. We're now up to 40, over 47,000 registered voters, we need to have 47,325. So we keep going it up, we have a lot more registered voters. We go back to before voter holders, we were at around 34,000, 35,000. So we have around 15,000 more voters than we had 10 days ago. And just needs more ballots, we have to create more ballots, we have to do that. And this is a complicated election because all the special districts all have different ballot size. So it is over our $5,000 limit, which requires more approval.
Are those ballots being sent back, are they going to be the most mistaken, do you think?
Well, you know, we're number one in luck factor, but special elections are around the 20%, 20, 30%. So I'd say maybe 30% to 12,000, somewhere around there. About maybe 15,000 we'll get back. Definitely not like what we've seen during the presidential, around the 70s or across us seeing 35,000 return ballots. So, but still we have to wait till everybody turns a man at eight and that's when a lot of people do vote, is that last minute.
I'll move approval of payment for $18,567, may I use that?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Item number five, property conveyance. Do you have that counsel?
Ah, yes, I do. Okay, the county proposed on two tax blocks for moving property taxes and a title earlier this year. The property in question are buildings located on leased property at the airport. The city of Hamilton is a property owner. And in this instance, the city of Hamilton is requesting that they convey the interest in the buildings and that is before the board consideration. The county also received a request from the building, former building owners to repurchase the property as well. I let them know the city's request and I have not heard any response from their attorney regarding that. The county can convey to the city and the city council is agreeable to accept in on the terms that the statute allows, which is basically that the city will have to hold on the property and it's a public purpose for 20 years.
Are giving us a recommendation?
I think in this instance, the property, the building owners can continue their lease with the city of Hamilton, if they so desire, and instead of just leasing the land, they can also lease the buildings. They might still be able to lease the property and those way I'm going to pay about $10,000 in property taxes to be required. So my recommendation would be to accept the city's proposal.
Right. This is BCC 2021-033.
I'd move to adopt or, oh, you already moved to adopt it, or?
No, no one did.
Sharon Murrah.
Nope. I need a motion.
I would move to adopt order number BCC 2021-033.
Did you second it? All in favor say aye.
I seconded them first, but they didn't second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Item number six is the La Guama Subcommittee.
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Walder, County Funding Director. The action I report you is for a nomination for Commissioner Doran to serve on a subcommittee for the water and groundwater management area. And as you know, the La Guama committee has been operating for a number of years in an effort to look for ways to reduce nitrate contamination in the La Guama and also remove that designation. And so they're marking on conducting a five-county study that will undertake scientific analysis to enhance our understanding of what's going on with nitrates in the basin. So the recommendation of the committee was to form a subcommittee and to oversee this work. And so the proposal, the nomination would be for Commissioner Doran to co-chair this committee with Commissioner Lindsey from Morrow County with support from each county's funding department.
In reference to Commissioner Doran's making a motion on his own behalf, I would move for that, BCC 2021-032.
I'll second that. Is he required to be able to pronounce the name of the committee?
I'm not sure what language that is, maybe they want to have to say it like I do.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Well, some of your commentary committee, so maybe they'll have to learn.
All right. Item number seven, emergency management payable.
Wait, emergency.
Oh, wait. What?
Emergency declaration.
Oh, okay. I forgot we added that one.
They already printed.
Do I have a pinkie?
There's a pinkie on there.
Oh, here we go. All right. Thank you. Item number seven deals with a drought disaster declaration discussion. This is BCC order number 2021-034. Who's going to talk about that? Commissioner Schaefer?
I'm Mr. Walder.
Counsel?
I'm Mr. Walder.
What? Commissioner Doran?
I'd make, I would make a motion for the declaration of drought with comments after the second.
Okay, then I'll open it up for discussion relative to the order and a potential drought disaster declaration.
I think that as we, as we view Umutilla County, it's easily to understand how much geography and how much climate and how much water differs from the Pumby River to the top of the Blue Mountains and from the Wallawall River to the deserts of Hutter Creek. We're a very complex county. We have a big, very large area in Umutilla County that is in the severe drought state right now, if I had on the map with another equally large area in extreme drought. The rest of the county is either in abnormally dry or moderate drought. And I'd like to thank Bob Walters in the funding department for the information that came through on this drought map because it's very interesting and it's very talented due to the degree with Umutilla County has to pay attention, not just to one geographical or one land mass. We are definitely a diverse community in a lot of different ways. But right now, we have in our agriculture areas, some extreme suffering because of the drought. So I, I'm speaking in favor of this motion and hopefully it will go through the political and the administrative process for the right commission.
I agree with Commissioner Doran. Just one of the things that I wanted to do in this instance is I'm going to protect our farmers and growers as summer, most, or kind of closer and closer, I think we're going to see some serious problems for our farmers and I don't know anything to do with that.
Commissioner Schaefer, do you have a document from the USDA? One of you has that, I think.
This is also on this, that's up on there.
That's what this is.
Oh, okay.
It's a cash to the banking.
Relative to our being a contiguous county?
Yes, I have that letter. This is written to Governor Brown from Pennsylsack, the secretary of the Department of Agriculture. And it says in accordance with Starland's PFR 795.5A, I'm designated in Union County in Oregon as a primary natural disaster and due to recent drought. According to the US drought monitor, Union County suffered from a drought intensity value during growing season of one, a D2 drought severe for eight or more consecutive weeks, or two, D3 drought extreme, or D4 drought exceptional. And in accordance with section 3021A of the Consolidated Department of Rural Development Act, Baker, Grant, and Umatilla, and allow counties in Oregon to remain as contiguous disaster counties. Other counties in Oregon, they have already been designated as a natural disaster counties if they have previously met the requirements found in number seven, CFR 759.5A, fully current crop year. A circular disaster designation makes farm operators in primary counties and those counties contiguous, as spoken in Umatilla County, will be. These are primary counties eligible to be considered for certain assistance through Department Service Agency, providing eligibility requirements of that. This assistance includes FSA emergency loans. Farmers and eligible counties have eight months from the date of a circular disaster declaration to apply for emergency loans. FSA considers each emergency loan application on its own merits, taking into account the county's citizens' production losses on the farm and the security and repayment ability of the operator. Global FSA offices can provide guidance to the farmers with further information, since here in Pennsylsack, Secretary. And this is all our.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion, Commissioner Doran or Commissioner Schaefer?
No one.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Item number seven is an emergency management payable. Ah, yes, okay. An old agenda. All right. Item number eight, emergency management payable signs.
I would move for approval with comments after the second, please.
I'll second that. It looks like Tom Ralph is on the phone. Did he even discuss about that too?
All right, you're on. Yes, Commissioner Ron Carey, from the Sheriff's Office. Robert was going to take the lead on the sense of financial issue, but essentially what I believe is being asked here is, do we think the payables that are being requested to fulfill the needs of the vendors that we received out in accordance with the board commissioners' approval when we went out for state home security grants for $105,000 between both Umatilla and Morrow counties? Those items have been procured and have a student license service that we use all within our respective counties. I think we want a few hundred dollars over, but my intention on the request for reimbursement is to ask for a little bit more than what was awarded to us, which I was getting a traditional amount, a lot that will be granted. So we're looking at 100% reimbursement on $105,000 and change. Question, Tom, is this equipment co-used between Morrow County and Umatilla County or do you guys buy two, you get one, we get one? It was, you get one, we get one, but we have agreements in place between our offices to have them available for each other if we need. The primary purpose, you know, this was if, you know, we understand that geopolitical boundaries are not always ready by another nature. And sometimes it might be, say, well, for us, it's one county and another, something like that. We might need to set up evacuations also to be called on this other county, just like we did with Adrian. Also with events such as, I'll round up, where say they took and verified additional signs. Or availability of some of this equipment, we can ask the other if it's available. So it is stored and inventoried in each county, it's not, okay. Anyway, we have, we have one large thing we're not currently, that we currently, Umatilla County has sorted events in our office. A small one that's currently deployed out on the highway because the sheriff's office paid for operating that with additional rate arrangements. So it's out packing speeds right now around the start, so on Sunshine Lane as we speak. Where there are both posts on, on, oh, sorry, River Road, near the Harmiston area. And then a few more are with me at the mall there, in the back of my vehicle, or after the parking space. And then four off the central, so in the same district area, they're going to store it until they're ready to use. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? What's your pleasure?
There was a motion and a second, you're waiting for the votes?
Do we have a motion already?
Motion and a second.
All right. Apparently we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is a temporary double fill of fiscal assistant position on a halftime basis through June 30th in Human Services. Does anybody wish to speak to it or we just have a motion?
Jennifer Blake is ready.
Jennifer, are you there?
I am. I'd be happy to speak on this. Human Services recently had a resignation of a long-term employee. It's going to require some cross-training of some current staff. So the proposal here is to, to enable fill of the million position for halftime through June 30th to allow for cross-training.
I have any relation of approval?
I would second the motion.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Harmiston payable. Commissioner Doran, would you speak to that, please?
Yes, this is a group of the cities of Umatilla, Harmiston, Samfield, and Echo. As a group, this put together a funding package for lobbying for projects that fit in each of their, yeah, cities and basically the West Ham project such as the Umatilla River Trail project that goes from Echo to Umatilla and some of the discussions of other regional, especially in the trans area. But it does put together a lobbying group for those projects, both for the foreign
Would you also like to make the motion?
The one thing I should add is this is funded by each city. Each city makes a contribution, not just each city makes a contribution along with the, I would move for approval, the Harmiston, the West Ham Umatilla County Community Development Group for $10,000.
Okay, is there a second?
I don't have a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Our final item is the Echo Community Benefit Plans and I would like to thank Commissioner Schaefer who stepped in in my absence to attend that meeting. So I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Schaefer.
So very close, my pleasure to do it. It was, the folks at Echo were rolled up their own carpet and they were phenomenal work with us. So there was a couple of grants that we looked at, one was the city of Echo requesting $5,000 to update the ancient storage fire equipment display in Fort Ingraham Park. In fact, was the hand, was approved. Also the Echo Fire Department was requesting $4,823.17 for self-contained breathing apparatus for search rescue on this and electric conditioning protection headsets. And I would also approve unanimously. City also indicated that there was an extra $284 from the city of Ingraham's grant that was going to be returned to the benefit account. Also there's an extension, there's a, there's that other grant, it was a previous year for our teacher that had not been able to spend and fill it and it was extended and that was granted as well. And that was it. And so that's what they were asking us to approve, which is BCC 2021-032. And with that, I would make the motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty, that brings us to the conclusion of our agenda. Comments from commissioners? Commissioner Doran?
Just real quickly, and I'm glad that we ended on this benefit program, visiting a lot of the local, very small cities in Umatilla County and attending their city council. city council meetings. I, I just have to say I'm amazed at how well these city councils perform their operations and their, their responsibilities on very, very slim budgets. And so I just want to take my hat off to all of the city council members throughout the county and the job that they do with the assets they have to work with. So my hat's off to every, every one of the municipalities throughout the county, just to be, thank you to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Doran. Mr. Schaefer?
Well, I can't stop that, I couldn't agree more, so, just you and I.
I think just for the record, we will note that we are in the second, we had our orientation for the Rocket Program on Friday, and now we are having the second of our two half-day workshops at the end of the day this afternoon. They will turn over the, the process to us and will be responsible for carrying it forward with respect to identifying some areas in which we can revise and renovate our, our mental health services. And we have, I think, almost 30 people who have, who have given up quite a bit of time to do that and, and we appreciate that. In addition, tomorrow we start our annual budget review. We will go through the preliminary budget for two, maybe three days. So we have volunteers doing that too. So we have a lot of volunteer labor this week. So that's what I have. Anything else for the good of the order? Well adjourned.